Call this Planning Commission meeting to order. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Good evening.
Members Borja?
Here.
Corona Sabaniano?
Here.
Tatisi?
Here.
And Wong?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
And let's go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so it looks like we've got three items on the agenda today. Go ahead and start with the first item.
Chairperson Wong, if it's okay with you, I'm going to read the public comment announcement.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use courteous language. To make a public comment, please complete a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk. The chairperson will call your name when it is your turn to make a comment. In-person comments will be taken first. To make a public comment by Zoom, please raise your hand. If calling into the meeting, use star nine to raise your hand to indicate you would like to make a public comment. You may also send a written comment to boardclerk@zakcounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. And that concludes the announcement.
Great, thank you. As you can tell, I like to run an efficient meeting. Ms. Patton, are you ready to present the first item?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Item number one is a major amendment, and it is located in the Rio Linda, Alberta community. The environmental document is an addendum to Alberta-specific plan environmental impact report.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Emma Patton, Senior Planner, and this evening I'll be presenting the Alberta-specific Plan Amendment. Little bit of context to start. The Alberta-specific plan area is located about 10 miles northeast of downtown, just south of the Placer County line. The specific plan area is comprised of about 1,744 acres, and Alberta Road travels east-west through the specific plan area, and 16th Street travels north-south. On your screen there, you should see the boundary of the Alberta-specific plan area. The Rio Linda-Alverda Community Plan was adopted in 1998 and directed for the comprehensive planning of what would become the Alberta-specific plan, which was adopted in 2007. Since 2007, the county has approved several minor and major amendments to the specific plan and four tentative subdivision maps totaling 2,386 residential lots. The county is currently processing three other parcel maps that total about 130 lots. There are a variety of land uses planned within the specific plan, with denser residential and commercial land uses planned toward the center of the plan area, and with progressively less dense uses planned as you move outward within the plan area. Here you can see the Alberta-specific plan land use plan. Here's a map of the projects that have been approved within the specific plan, along with those in process. Notably, earlier this year, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the Alberta 245 project, consisting of approximately 680 residential units. This was ultimately approved by the Board as well. When projects are planned within the specific plan area, they generally need to rezone from their existing agricultural residential designations to designations consistent with the specific plan land use plan. When they do, the specific plan's rezone conditions related to financing of facilities, maintenance, and operation, specific plan roadway, drainage, trail, and park improvements, along with mitigation measures to mitigate potential environmental impacts, are all applied to these projects. The request before you today is a major amendment to the Alberta-specific plan that would change the applicability of these rezone conditions as they relate to agricultural residential properties in the northwest quadrant of the specific plan. The red boundary on the map on your screens shows the area of this amendment. The project would remain -- those projects, those rezones within that red quadrant there would remain subject to the rezone conditions to dedicate land and mitigate for their impacts. But with this amendment, they would no longer be subject to off-site improvements, which regionally serve the Alberta-specific plan area, and which could be considered a heavy lift and financially burdensome on some of the AR property owners, who in all likelihood, if they rezoned, would propose relatively small parcel maps and subdivisions compared to the rest of the specific plan area. Something that led to the county initiating this amendment was that we do have a request for a tentative parcel map in with Planning and Environmental Review, which we did hear from the project proponents that those existing rezone conditions would be financially burdensome and would limit their ability to divide their property as allowed by the specific plan. This proposal was brought to the Rio Linda and Alberta CPAC, who recommended its unanimous approval in January of 2022. Based on the CPAC's support, the amendment's compliance with applicable general plan, community plan, and with specific plan policies, there being no environmental concerns, and the amendment's ability to reduce barriers for agricultural residential rezones and subdivisions as allowed by the specific plan, staff is recommending approval of this amendment. Specifically, staff is recommending that you determine that the previously certified Alberta-specific plan environmental impact report, along with the prior drainage master plan amendment addendum, and the sequo addendum that was prepared for this request, be deemed adequate and complete, and that you approve the resolution to amend the specific plan. The Board is the final decision body for this request, so your recommendation today will be provided to the Board. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Commissioner Sabaniano?
Thank you. Is there other instances where exceptions like this have been applied, other parts of the county?
Yeah, in speaking with our county special district staff, they have noted that in other master planned areas, other specific plans, there have been some alternative allowances or alternative conditions for agricultural residential type properties, specifically to what they will be responsible for constructing and what their financial obligations would be.
Okay, thank you. And then in the quadrant that was shared, I don't know if we can go back to it, because I know there's only one proposal at this time, right? But the change that we're making will apply to anything else that is proposed in that square?
Yes, that's correct. There's currently one tentative parcel map that is being proposed within that area that includes a rezone request as well. Should there be other rezone requests in the future that correspond with other tentative parcel maps or subdivision maps, they would also benefit from this amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. You had mentioned that other parts of the county had looked at alternatives, and as, you know, Commissioner Sabaniano mentioned, or, you know, yeah, Commissioner Sabaniano had asked whether or not other parts of the county had considered similar exemptions. Why in this case are we considering, or what I would consider some straight-out exemptions from the conditions rather than modifying the conditions in order to make them a little bit more feasible?
So in this case, the only parcels that would be exempt from those conditions would be those agricultural residential properties, and what they're being exempt from largely is off-site improvements. These are off-site improvements that the more dense residential subdivisions, where typically more residential lots are being proposed, and they have the critical mass to be able to support that type of -- those types of improvements are being requested. And so they have the capacity to be able to support those improvements. And so that's why, in this case, the conditions are remaining within the actual Alberta-specific plan document, and the only thing that is changing is the applicability of those conditions and who they exactly apply to. I will say, in terms of the finance conditions, the AR properties would remain subject to the financing requirements of the Alberta-specific plan, but they would be subject to entering into an interim fee strategy. So there are some instances where we don't know at this point what the ultimate fees within the Alberta-specific plan would be. And so in essence, it's modified by allowing them to enter into an interim fee program that would be specific to the project that was being proposed. So there was an effort to try to make sure that these AR projects are still meeting their obligation to comply with the specific plan.
Okay, thank you. And, I mean, I guess, so, right now, this would only apply in the northwest, or these exemptions from these, you know, specific conditions would only apply in the northwest quadrant, but there isn't, I mean, you know, let's say, a year from now, let's say, the southeast corner also wants similar exemptions. You know, I guess, you know, the -- we don't really have anything that would prevent future areas also wanting similar things, or, you know, similar exemptions, because we would have already set the precedent with this. And I kind of view, even though I appreciate that this is an agricultural residential area, that doesn't mean that they should be without community amenities, such as parks and trails and stuff like that. And so I guess I just would have, and I'm kind of getting ahead of myself in the discussion part, but I would have preferred to see maybe amendment or modification of the conditions rather than straight exemptions.
If I can offer a little bit of clarification on that matter, the way that the amendment is crafted, it doesn't preclude the AR properties from dedicating land that was anticipated for trails by the specific plan, or dedicating right-of-way that was anticipated for roadways, or drainage easements that were anticipated for basins. Those AR properties would still be responsible to comply with the Alberta-specific plan and all of the obligations of the specific plan, including parks, trails, drainage facilities, et cetera. In addition, they would be required to, they would be financially obligated to pay fees that go towards those regional-serving facilities. However, there'd be some sort of interim fee established, because some of those fee programs haven't been developed at this point. So they would still be responsible for providing those facilities that were envisioned within the plan area, if those facilities are within that agricultural residential portion of their properties, and they would still be responsible for funding those items as well. They just wouldn't be responsible for providing off-site improvements.
And so, and I guess, you know, speaking of the fees, you know, even though they're -- so they'd be contributing, you know, fees to help pay for some of this future, you know, or I guess, you know, future infrastructure, we'll just refer to it as. But how do, I guess, who is responsible for making sure that that actually gets built, you know, or implemented if they are no longer responsible for any of the off-site stuff?
So as there are, the rezone conditions would remain for all of the other projects in the area, and there's different trigger points that would trigger those developments. And so, say, a residential subdivision was building 600 units, and with that, they triggered several development, several improvements within the specific plan, say, a basin, say, some roadways, et cetera. At that point, those things would need to be constructed, and anything that was eligible for, was considered a reimbursable expense would get reimbursed through that fee program to whoever was constructing it. So it would all be developed and constructed based on the timing provided within the specific plan.
But those things wouldn't necessarily be within the northwest quadrant, because that area is basically exempt from those conditions, right?
There are some off-site trigger requirements incorporated within the rezone condition, so I couldn't say for certain what and when would be triggered with what level of development. But certainly, some of those developments in, say, the southern portion of the Alberta-specific plan are responsible for off-site improvements as you move north within the specific plan. So very well, they could include some of those improvements within the AR portion of that area. I'll also say, it doesn't mean that they're completely exempt from all improvements. They do need to improve their frontages, they need to improve their roadways if they're using them, or if it's deemed, if there's an appropriate nexus. That sort of, the sort of conditions would be determined on a project-by-project basis as tentative subdivision maps or parcel maps are considered by Planning and our Department of Transportation and Department of Water Resources.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Just a quick question. I was just kind of curious on one of the parts about providing fair share funding towards construction of an interchange. That's one of the addendums. There's a number of other fees where you allow everyone else to pay for it, but this one specifically, and a number of those, has that been brought up as like a barrier to, I mean, 5% of the project costs may not seem that big, but I guess, any future development would still be subject to any transportation improvements, or if they have to create like a Melrose in there? I think I'm just trying to figure out why a fair share funding is specifically called out, except for that northwestern quad.
Commissioner Borah, can you clarify which rezone condition you're referring to?
Yeah, it would be on number 30, part E, oh, sorry, no, D, actually.
I'm sorry, rezone condition 30?
Mm-hmm. It's on page, it's on Exhibit A, condition number 30. It was the part that speaks to, or actually, hold on, resolution. It was the section that said specifically that there would be a fair share of a 5% of any project cost that would be going to the interchange, and then you're specifically excluding the northwest area out of it.
I'm sorry, I'm having a challenge finding that particular rezone condition. There may be a numbering issue here, because I have condition 30 relating to roadway improvements and triggers.
Let me try to --
I might need to look into that and follow up.
Yeah, let me try to find up and follow up. I guess my concern really is just, for example, the county goes and competes for local partnership programs on 30 SB1, and there has been precedence that any time you create a carve-out in which a community or district does not pay into the transportation improvement fees, then based on the SB1 programs, they would not be liable. So if Caltrans was to apply for that interchange of the 99, and then the CTC was to say, hey, you know, you actually created a carve-out that said they were not liable to pay the fair share, that's all. But that might just be a drafting question.
Got it. I can't speak to 30D, but I will say that for all of these conditions, conditions, gosh, it's 30, conditions like 26 through 36 about, those are all, relate to the traffic mitigation measures that are all triggered at various points, and that's something that our Department of Transportation is looking into with greater detail. They are looking into, preparing an amendment to these traffic mitigation measures to address the timing and phasing of those improvements, and potentially allow the development to occur at earlier phases of that development, very similar to what the Planning Commission considered for the North Interstate Station-specific plan. And so I would say that that might be something that would be good to ask of Department of Transportation when they do come back with that amendment, but unfortunately, I'm not prepared to speak to that today.
I can follow up after the meeting, but thank you, appreciate it.
Chair, can I add, just to the conversation, Jessica Brandt? I do want to point out that this really, they're only getting these exemptions if they stay within an ag-res zone, right? And in this particular area, likely the smallest that they could feasibly go is about two acres. And so, you know, the sort of goal of this is to allow these two, three-lot potentially maps to go through that have minuscule impacts on traffic and other sort of specific plan-wide items, without having to carry a burden that something like a, you know, 200-lot RD5 project would be carrying. So just a little more context. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back to the dais for discussion. Would any of the Commissioners like to kick us off? Oh, probably. Is there any public comment?
We do not have any in-person public comments, but we do have someone in Zoom who would like to make a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Caller number 4198, please make your public comment.
Hold on a moment. Chairperson Wong, two minutes, or?
Yeah, let's do two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Caller, please start your public comment. You have two minutes.
Under the specific plan that was approved for use, parcel number 202-0070-036 is in the northwest quadrant. It also shows on the map Palade Road being relocated north and south, which cuts through that parcel. That parcel is in my family. It's been in my family since the 1800s. It additionally cuts through parcel 202-0070-035, which currently has a residence on that property. It's 10 acres. Additionally, there's a barn that's south of those properties. That barn was built by my great-grandfather in 1867, and on your maps, it shows that your road, Palade Road, is going to be cutting right through that as well. Is that historical barn going to be removed? Are the new roads going to cut through our parcels, our property? Those are questions that I have not yet got an answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Does staff have any response to the public comment question?
So I can't speak to the alignment of Palade Road today, or, you know, when Palade Road will be constructed, or what sort of dedications would be required at such time. The scope of this amendment is limited to the application of the rezone conditions. I'm happy to speak with the caller. I think I've been in contact with that individual, actually, and provide them with some additional information regarding the Alberta-specific plan and the ultimate plans for the alignment of Palade Road. But this amendment today doesn't affect the alignment of Palade Road or the dedication of that roadway, except for any, except for that any projects that are proposed within that area would need to be meeting, complying with the Alberta-specific plan, including providing roadway improvements.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else on the line?
We do not.
Okay, bring it back to the dais. Any discussion from my fellow Commissioners? Okay, well, I guess I'll kick us off, and I think it's come as no shock to my colleagues that, you know, I think that this amendment, you know, it does have some concerns for me. I'm worried that even though right now we're only talking about the northwest quadrant, there could potentially, you know, be a slippery slope in what, you know, what prevents other areas from, you know, wanting similar exemptions. As I said earlier in my comments, you know, I would have preferred, you know, while I certainly understand wanting to provide, you know, flexibility, I would have preferred for maybe that flexibility to come in the form of, well, if you can't do this, then, you know, maybe some kind of a slight, like a lower, I hate to call it a lower standard, but an alternative standard, rather than just a straight-out exemption from these things. And while I appreciate that there is nothing that prevents them from doing them still, there's nothing that would require them also. And, you know, I think that, you know, in the future, you know, we, during my short period of time here on the Commission, we've seen many times where different specific plans have been amended over and over and over again. And so, you know, who's to say, like, while right now it might be an agricultural residential area, it could become an area that is, you know, does become more populated, and then it's, you know, it won't necessarily have the parks and the trails and, you know, some of the things that would have come with those conditions that we are now exempting them from. So I have those concerns with this amendment. Anyone else? Commissioner Sabaniano?
Thank you. Yeah, I have the same concerns. I think I've shared and have asked, like, in other projects too, more about the parks and the trails. I think that that is something that I really care a lot about, having lived in a community that didn't have a park for three years and saw the problems, the issues, and the trails not being connected. So that's something that I also have concerns about. And maybe, I don't know if I can ask a question. When I was looking at the document, it looks like it says that the northwestern quadrant may enter into a fee agreement, but not shall. Is that correct, or maybe perhaps I'm looking at the wrong section?
So each individual department would need to determine what they would require at the time of the rezone or corresponding tentative parcel map or tentative subdivision map. If there is an existing fee program in place, that tentative parcel map would be subject to those fees. If the individual departments required an interim fee, they would be subject to those. However, some departments could determine that the proposal would require very minimal fees, and absent a fee study, it would be a challenge to determine what those fees might be, and so they could, in that instance, waive the fee requirements for that particular project.
Okay.
But that would all be determined at the time of that project moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just chime in. It feels to me that this is kind of almost a way of kind of keeping people to be able to keep agricultural residential in that area versus being incentivized to develop it differently. Am I understanding it correctly that if they wanted to do higher density of some sort, that the exemptions would go away, and so therefore, they would have to pay fees, they would have to look at those parks and all those other things? But it's if, in preservation of keeping it agriculture residential, that they would be exempt from those conditions?
That's correct.
So I see it as kind of, if we want to kind of keep these more agricultural spaces, it makes more sense to me than to limit or exempt some of those conditions so that, as areas potentially around them develop, they can, I'll say, be incentivized to stay in that agricultural open space dynamic. So I would be supportive of the proposal tonight.
Is that a motion?
If we're ready, I don't want to jump the gun, but I'm happy to make the motion of approving staff recommendations.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Tatisi, second by Commissioner Broha. And the motion fails with Members Wong, or Member Wong abstaining, and Member Mariana Corona Sabaniano voting no. Okay, so.
So it's no recommendation to the Board. You guys can discuss doing a motion to reconsider if anyone thinks that there's some additional information or input that might sway a vote here or there. Otherwise, that's it, and staff can, you know, convey kind of the discussion to the Board when they hear this.
Just move it along. Okay. We'll go ahead and move it along to the Board of Supervisors with no recommendation. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item number two. Clerk, would you please read it into the record?
Item number two is a conditional use permit, special development permit and design review located in 9257 Tavernor Road, approximately 1,800 feet north of the intersection of Shorthorn Road and Tavernor Road in the Kasumnas Community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration. I believe you have several comment slips at the dais, Chairperson Wong, but I also would like to administer the oath for this item at this time. Is that okay?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Administer the oath for this item?
Oh, yes.
So for anyone who wants to speak on item two, the applicant as well as public commentators, please stand and raise your right hand and appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? Thank you. When you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement. I have been sworn. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen and commissioners. This evening, I'll be presenting both this item and the item to follow on behalf of Austin Chan, the project manager for each of these projects. So first off, we have Taverner Road, wireless communication facility. This project is located at 8257 Taverner Road, at the intersection of Taverner Road and Shorthorn Road in the Kasumnas Community. The subject parcel is developed with a single-family residence and several accessory structures. The site is within the Agricultural Five zoning district. This is an interim zoning district within the county. Properties within this zone are meant to eventually rezone to an agricultural residential five or AR five zoning district. In the interim, Title IV of the zoning code indicates that those uses and standards that apply to the AR five zone apply to the A five zone. The project site is surrounded by residential uses to the north, south, and west, and the south canal is located to the east. The applicant requests a use permit to allow a wireless communication facility in the A five zoning district, a special development permit to deviate from the maximum height and the separation requirements, and a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. I'll go into a bit greater detail regarding the details of the special development permit request on the slides to follow. Before I do so, though, I will note that an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project. The document was released for public review on June 16, 2023. The document discussed potential impacts to several resource areas, including land use, biological resources, aesthetics, and hazardous materials. The document concluded that the project would result in less than significant impacts with the implementation of mitigation measures. During the public review period, the county received two letters, one from a member of the public regarding aesthetics and microwave emissions, the other letter from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board noted potential permits and regulations that the applicant would be responsible for as a part of the project's implementation. A response to comments was prepared in response to each of these comments and was published with the project materials. This slide includes the site plan for the project. The applicant proposes to locate the facility within a 250-square-foot ground lease area accessed via a new driveway from Taverner Road. The zoning code includes minimum separation requirements from different zoning designations. In this case, the project's site is within zones classified as Group One zones, requiring a minimum separation of three times the height of the tower. As proposed, the facility would be located 185 feet from the north property boundary, 76.6 feet from the south property boundary, and 170.4 feet from the west property boundary, requiring a special development permit. This slide includes the ground equipment plan. The fenced area would enclose the tower facility and corresponding equipment. The fence would consist of a chain-link fence with slats. Here you can see the proposed elevations for the wireless communication facility. The tower would implement a monopine stealth design to help camouflage the existing facility or camouflage the facility amongst existing trees, excuse me. Towers are allowed to be up to 55 feet tall. The proposed is 85 feet tall with branches extending up to 90 feet, requiring a special development permit. The next many slides features photo simulations of the proposed monopine facility. Here you can see a view of the tower from Taverner Road looking in a southwesterly direction. The facility would be largely concealed from this perspective by existing vegetation. Here you can see a representation of the proposed monopine facility from the planned access driveway. Here you can see a view of the proposed facility from Taverner Road, but looking in a northeasterly direction. Here's a view from the property across the street looking toward the proposed tower. Here's a view from across Taverner Road facing the proposed facility. This is a view from the subdivision across the canal to the east. Again, from across the canal to the east. And finally, here's a view of the facility looking south down Taverner Road toward the The location of the cell tower and its proposed height were requested by the applicant to meet their coverage needs. This slide features the existing coverage. The yellow dot represents the project site. This slide shows the coverage with the proposed tower. The project was considered by both the CPAC and the DRAK. The CPAC was heavily attended with approximately 50 members of the public. While some comments were provided in support of the tower, most in attendance were opposed, providing concerns related to aesthetics, health effects, the lack of a need for a cell tower, and incompatibility with the community. The Design Review Advisory Committee reviewed the project and recommended that the project be found in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines, noting its monopine steffing helped to camouflage the facility within its context, and that the facility appeared to be relatively well-concealed by existing architecture, tree canopies, and foliage as presented in the photo simulations. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan and zoning code as conditioned. It can be found compatible with surrounding zones and land uses as it implements a monopine stealth design, consistent with the surrounding area's mature trees that reduce the attention to the tower. There are no significant environmental concerns and adequate mitigation measures would be applied. The proposed would comply with requirements limiting exposure to radio frequency energy, and the tower would provide cellular coverage to support the surrounding rural residential community and opportunities for future colocations. Based on this analysis, staff is recommending approval of the request, specifically that the planning commission determine that the mitigated negative declaration prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate and complete, that you adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve the use permit, approve the special development permit to deviate from maximum height and separation requirements, and determine that the proposed is substantially compliant with the countywide design guidelines. That concludes my presentation this evening. I am available for questions, and as I understand it, the applicant and their representative is also present today. I believe they also have a presentation they'd like to share with you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff this evening?
Just a quick question. I just want to understand, so part of what's being brought for tonight is an exception to county code relative to height, and then an exception to the code regarding the setback that was necessitated by the height. Is that correct?
So there, for wireless communication facilities, we have setback requirements, and then we have separation requirements. In this case, the deviation that's being requested relates to the separation requirements from the surrounding similar Group One zones. And so, in this case, the tower is 90 feet tall inclusive of the branching. It's 85 feet tall if you look at just the tower itself. So we would look at 270-foot plus or minus minimum separation requirement from those adjacent properties within its Group One context. And so, yes, one of the deviations being requested today is related to the separation from those adjacent properties, and it is affected by the height of the facility.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the applicant presentation.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the commission. Kevin Sullivan, I have been sworn. I'll be giving the presentation on behalf of Vertical Bridge, the applicant, tonight. Also here is Bill Lewis. He's the planning consultant for Vertical Bridge and has detailed knowledge about some of the planning and leasing details. So first, this site is needed to improve T-Mobile's wireless network coverage and capacity in the Wilton community. Today, we know that people have a lot of different mobile devices, and they're using those mobile devices for all kinds of different things, many of which require a lot of data. We've got, you know, photos and streaming and videos and things like that. And so, in addition to the need to provide a bigger coverage footprint for the network in the area, there's also a need for additional facilities to handle all the capacity or the throughput that goes through the network. Here, the lease site is, the lease area is less than 1% of the total 5.77-acre large property. The facility is going to have minor grading for a gravel access road, mostly on flat ground, and also minor foundation work. The facility is also going to have a very high or dense branch count, similar to one that this commission approved some months ago at a facility at a church. Also, the, as noted in Exhibit A to my July 19 letter to the county, this facility, the pole, is designed to have a 40-foot fall zone, where the significant stresses on the pole are mostly at the top 40 feet. The leased area is going to have an eight-foot-high fence with privacy slats, and any equipment in the lease area is going to be six feet or below, so it'll all be shielded. The applicant took a look at six other potential sites in the area to locate the facility, but those sites were rejected because they were either, I think one of them was outside the search ring, and others, the property owners were not interested in doing a lease. The project operations must comply with the FCC radio frequency health safety standards, and here, a detailed RF study for the project identified that the facility will generate less than 10% of the allowable FCC limit for RF energy at the nearby residents. And then, the County Design Review Advisory Committee determined that the project substantially complies with the county's design guidelines. The project is not going to have any environmental impacts, significant environmental impacts as determined by the thorough initial study and mitigated negative declaration, with some standard mitigation measures that are applied. This property is not in or near any designated scenic roadways or corridors. The facility lease area is about 200 feet or so away from Taverner Road. There are many oak, pine, and other trees on this property, some as high as 56 feet, that are near the lease site to provide some screening and visual integration. The nearest off-site homes are about 570 feet away to the southeast, 275 feet away to the south, 325 feet away to the west, and 470 feet away to the northwest. The facility is going to comply with all of the county codes, including those with respect to noise and fire safety. And then, when we take a look at the kind of surrounding road network, Taverner Road near the property has many tall trees and other vegetation. It also has tall utility lines with our utility poles with crossarms and transformers and high utility lines, and we'll see some of that in some additional slides. So here, we've got, this is a photo from the driveway to the current residence on the property, and you can see, you know, a lot of tall trees on Taverner Road looking northeast. You've also got, you can see way out there, there's, you know, a tall utility pole with crossarms and transformers. All of this provides both screening and visual integration for the proposed facility. Here's another view of Taverner Road looking to the southwest, and again, you see tall trees, and right there, you can see the, another tall utility pole with the crossarms and transformers. And then, here's an aerial view of the site. The location of the lease site is about right here, but you can see that ringing the entire property are, you know, pretty dense lines of trees that are providing both some screening and visual integration for the proposed facility. The facility is needed to provide both new and enhanced and improved wireless services to this part of the Wilton community. Those new and improved services are going to benefit people in, you know, their everyday life, their business, but also with respect to emergency 911 services. T-Mobile's nearest five-area network facilities closest to this proposed facility received about 250 E-911 calls in a recent 30-day period, and this facility is just going to enhance that E-911 capability. The facility footprint is going to cover many hundreds, if not thousands, of unserved or underserved homes with reliable in-building and in-vehicle coverage. That's really the benchmark here for any network. You're looking for reliable, solid, continuous in-building coverage. You know, having spotty, occasional outdoor coverage is not what the consumer base is looking for, and it's not what the FCC has identified as what an appropriate standard for wireless coverage is. This facility is also going to provide new reliable coverage for segments of Dillard Road at Clay Station Road, Clay Station Road at Taverner, and Taverner at Clay Station Road, with collective average daily trips of nearing 10,000. So here are some coverage maps. Again, the proposed facility is about right there, and you can see in this area with all of the pink and the lighter shades, this is demonstrating that there is no reliable, continuous, strong in-building or even in-vehicle coverage in this area. It's the darker shades of red in some of, next to some of these other T-Mobile network facilities that we're trying to connect with and fill in. And you can see here that with the proposed facility, we're getting a good footprint of solid in-building coverage, and we're starting to connect to the T-Mobile facility up to the north and also the one down to the southwest. So we really are filling in a pretty large area that covers a number of homes and street Here's an overview that shows the approximate boundaries of at least part of the new coverage footprint that's going to provide solid, reliable in-building coverage in the area. And then, finally, Vertical Bridge requests that, consistent with staff recommendation, the planning commission certify the mitigated negative declaration for the project, approve the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and then approve the project's conditional use permit, special development permit, and design review. And we will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant tonight? Seeing none? Thank you. Okay, well, let's go ahead and, I guess, move into public comment. I guess we'll go with the telephone lines first.
Okay.
If you could please cue those up, clerk.
Yes, we have one, and going to ask the person to unmute. Miranda Borg?
Yes, hi.
Yes, hi. Miranda Borg, I've been sworn in. Before I start, I just want to mention that when you spoke about what was to the east of the 5G site, when you said it was the Folsom Canal, that's not quite true. Right on the, I mean, it is, but right on the other side of the Folsom Canal, within a couple hundred feet, begins our community of 223 homes. I've lived here 18 years in my home, and a little bit about our community, most of us, this is our primary residence. It's not investment properties. We're not renting them out. A lot of us are here for the long term. And I also sell real estate, so I tell you that 3% to 4% of these homes at the most go up for sale a year. So the problem is, is that there's so many negative health effects in relation with 5G that we know about. I could go on and on, but I won't. I'm going to leave it to somebody else there that's also representing our community. But what that does is, and then also affects, not to mention the bee population, we have several beekeepers too, and that decreases the population and oftentimes kills them off, which is not a good thing for the agriculture. So how I kind of think about it, it's in real simple terms. We get actually really, you know, pretty good cell service. We rarely drop a call. I don't know many people in our development that drop calls. I know more people that are scared to death of this 5G tower because they know what it does. It changes your body's cellular structure, causes different kinds of cancers, it's harmful for your health. And kind of so basically what happens is, everybody knows this, and so if that tower goes up, and it's an eyesore, so just so you know, when the gentleman said that the property had quote-unquote "tall trees" around it, what's his definition of tall? Because honestly, the 5G tower would outdo those by at least three to four times. They're not very tall trees there.
Ms., if you could please wrap up your comment.
So it would stick out like a sore thumb. So therefore, people, if we have to sell our homes because this goes up because we're scared of the health implications, then people that are buying here who are also smart buyers, they're not going to want to buy in our community. And then at that point, who's going to compensate all of us for taking the hit? It's financial, but it's health too.
Please wrap up your comment.
Okay, so obviously, I'm opposed to it, long story short, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's go ahead and move to public comment that we have here in the chambers. And just a friendly reminder that, you know, we're trying to limit public comment to two minutes per person, so if you could please keep that in mind. First up, we have a Mr. Gilbert Luhan. Luhan, thank you.
It is important to perhaps educate ourselves about the situation with 5G cell towers. The reality is, unfortunately, they are very dangerous because they emit radio frequency It will need additional cell stations throughout the neighborhood in order to be effective the way they want to initiate this program with this big tower. Cell towers are more dangerous than other cell towers. 5G is ultra-high frequency and ultra-high intensity. Short-length waves of the 5G do not travel as far. Therefore, more cell towers will be needed and installed perhaps on a distance equivalent to two to eight houses. This will increase greatly our RF radiation exposure for, you know, several meters. 5G uses 24 to 90 gigahertz. The higher the frequency, the more dangerous is to living organism, as it was stipulated with other people saying about the concerns on livestock and people and other animals. Studies have been done, and it says that the RF radiation is linked directly to the health problems such as cancer, DNA damage especially with the first 100 days of conception, sterility in men, and many other health issues that it could cause. We all know perhaps, but I want to mention that cell towers, you know, should not be nearby the people's homes in addition to no nearby schools, hospitals, but that's not applicable to our location, more than anything else is people's homes. Public health is a very high risk with this proposal. This 5G antenna.
Could please start to wrap up your comment, sir?
I'm sorry?
If you could please start to wrap up your comment.
Okay. There's no way that a 90-feet tower is going to be concealed from being seen from everywhere else. Existing trees are very short. Bottom line is, is that this will greatly increase the radiation exposure. And it tells us that six other locations have been reviewed and rejected.
Sir, if you could please wrap up here now at three minutes.
Okay. I'm here just to share some details, and I reject this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for attention.
Okay. Oops. Oh, here it is. Next, we have Fritz Cross. Please come on down, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I've provided an information paper to the clerk, which I suspect has been already provided to you with far more detail than what I'm going to touch on right now. I wanted to let you know that I entered this process without really knowing and understanding much about it, so I've done a lot of research, and I've looked primarily to peer-reviewed articles that specifically talk to studies, so that it's scientifically based. One of the things that I'm going to touch on, four quick items. First of all, there have been a lot of studies that say that proximity to cell towers impact property values. There have been a number of studies here in the U.S. and internationally that say that it can be as much as 20%. The Journal of Real Estate and Finance, for example, says that houses within 2,500 feet of a tower drop 2.4%, and if it's in visible range of the tower, it can be up to 10%. The HUD appraisal guide tells appraisers that they are required to label any cell towers that are in the general vicinity of the house because it is classified as a hazard and a nuisance, and it's something that has to be disclosed by sellers if they're going to sell their house. So we're concerned about the proximity of the towers to the homes that we all own. There's a lot of talk about the EMF, the electromagnetic force that's out there, and does it do something? Does it, is it cause this? Does it cause that? Every single study that I was able to find said, "We're not finding a whole lot of problems with this," except that in some, excuse me, in some cases, we see cancer, we see cognitive problems, we see this, we see that. And every single study says the same thing. It says, "More studies are available because there's very little data that's been gathered on 5G." They're extrapolating information from 4G, and they're saying, "Well, if 4G didn't hurt, then 5G won't hurt." And I propose that that's kind of like saying, "If you don't get hurt in a 10-mile-an-hour crash, you probably won't get hit and hurt in a 60-mile-an-hour crash." It really doesn't wash. You need to have the actual data.
If you could please start to wrap up, please.
I will. The issues of 5G on health and safety, same thing. Every single study said, "There's more studies that needs to be done." Finally, the issue of the impacts on aesthetics. The pictures that they showed only showed pictures from Taverner Road. There are 226 homes on the other side of the South Canal that didn't even get considered, and there's pictures in the information paper that I left that shows what the impacts are on the visual and the aesthetics from our side. So in behalf of all of the signatures that we turned in for CPAC and then the 25 or 30 more we turned in today, we're all asking that this please be denied.
Thank you. Just a reminder, please keep your comments to two minutes apiece, trying to be fair and making sure that everyone gets two minutes, so. I'm sorry, what was that?
Unless you're the proposer, you didn't start the timer for them.
Well, they, they are having a presentation, and I'm not going to debate with you the policies of the procedures of this commission. All right, next we have Ms. Diana Spear and Dan Spear. Are you guys speaking together?
I'm speaking for her, that's okay.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, come on down.
Hi, I'm Daniel Spear. I've been sworn in, I'm speaking for Diana Spear, who's also been sworn in, and we live at 9364 Taverner Road, about two properties down from the subject property and across the street, so pretty close. I saw my oak tree in one of the pictures, I do believe. Anyway, I want to be very clear that we're very much in favor of the cell tower. We have at our location, you know, I Google mapped how to get here, everyone has one of these, right? But they don't want a cell tower? And I Google mapped how to get here in my driveway, it didn't link onto anything. I have no cell reception in the dark hole that I'm in where I live. Furthermore, we're on Frontier, landline internet and phone, and it pulls a very poor service up from Clay Station via copper line to our home way up on by Shorehorn Taverner, that's a couple miles, and our internet there is extremely poor, so poor that my wife used to tutor her children, and then when COVID hit, she had to do it with internet. She had to stop doing that, at-risk youth. She had to stop doing, she was recruiting counselors for youth camps. She could no longer transmit documents, do that. We could not transmit documents to medical providers for our child because our internet is so poor. This cell tower offers an opportunity to have wireless internet service, which we very much welcome, not only in my wife and I, but also in my neighbor, Chris Tristan Wells. So, you know, great example of, you know, the NIMBYism here. The Ranch was approved, we lived there for 34 years before the PlayStation 1200 was approved, which is now the Ranch. We used to have a great view of the Sierras, we used to have a great night sky, you know, and now we don't have any of those. We used to have pollinators, used to go over into those fields and pollinate on wild flowers. Well, you know what? They don't do that anymore because we've had people come in with very urban values, and they're, because you cluster, they were clustered together, as you may recall, and so they're very dense over there, they're very urban thinking, and this is a great example of that, how they're.
If you could please begin to wrap up, sir.
Very much against that. So anyway, once again, we're very much in favor of this, this proposal.
Thank you. Let's see here. So I think that concludes for the public comment. Unless we have anyone else in the chambers today?
Can I get to speak? Do I have one too?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were speaking for both. Now you want to speak on?
No, 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 she doesn't like public speaking.
Okay, yes, please. Okay, so just to clarify, that was on behalf of Diana Spear, and now you are speaking on behalf of yourself, Daniel Spear.
You know, that's me. Okay, so once again, we're in favor of this proposal. Been there for 34 years, and we really need this service, and we welcome your approval of it. As I said, the cell reception is very poor, the landline internet is poor, the, you know, you can research anything on the internet. Vaccines give people diseases. COVID is bad, COVID vaccines are bad for you, you know? You can find all sorts of things, okay? The research is only as good as it really is. And so, you know, I'm sure you can find things that say 5G is bad, but the reality is, engineers report says, way below standards, 10% of standards. I used to set standards for the government, and I know they're very conservative. You'd probably get more radiation walking your mailbox in a day than this thing would put out in a year. So I'm not too worried about that, and me and my neighbors are in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would the applicant like to come up and respond to any of the comments made
Yes, thank you, Kevin Sullivan, again for Vertical Bridge. Just to reiterate that, consistent with county requirements, the project application was required to include a detailed EME or RF study, and the analysis there determined that the proposed facility is well within the FCC health safety standards for RF energy. And by the way, those FCC standards were just revisited and reaffirmed in 2019 in conjunction with a number of other federal agencies, including the FDA, the EPA, and OSHA. So we fully comply with the governing FCC health safety standards on that. Other than that, we're happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Great, thank you. Any follow-up questions for the applicant from the commissioners? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period, bring it back to the dais for discussion. Would anyone like to kick us off?
No, I guess I will say something. You know, I, I guess I'll just cut to the chase. You know, I am supportive of, you know, this particular project, I think, you know, based on some of the simulations that have been shown. I think the applicant did a good job of, you know, trying to have the tower be at about the same height as some of the trees that are already surrounding it, and, you know, I know for me personally, one of the most, I guess, frustrating or nerve-wracking things is if you're in a area you're unfamiliar with and you lose your cellphone service to be able to find your way out. That's happened to me a couple times in the dark, so that's not fun. So, you know, I think that increased coverage, you know, could be a good thing for a lot of the reasons listed, but then also for, you know, the general public who are, you know, traveling through the area and to make sure that, you know, they continue to have service, and, you know, we rely on our cellphones and internet for a lot of things, and I think we'll only continue to rely on it even more.
Chairperson Wong, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do have two people in the queue that I did not see them with their hands raised.
Okay.
So they're checking right now to see if they want to make public comments, if you don't mind reopening the public comment to let them make their public comments.
Yep, that's fine.
I would appreciate, thank you.
Yes, of course.
Okay, so, hold on. Dan?
Yes?
Please start your public comment, you have two minutes.
Okay. I've been out here for 34 years also. We live at 9234 Taverner Road, which is almost across from the property. There are other cell towers for, initially I'm against that or because of the proposed tower, because it's right in the middle of a populated, a fairly populated area, and to put a tower up there for those of us who moved to the country, to be in the country, that puts a cell tower right across the street where it's going to be very visible. It's going to be much higher than the trees than one would anticipate a 90-foot tower. There are other towers much more in reasonable locations, like the one on Fig Road. That's in the process also, that's a 120-foot tower. It's in the middle, there's no development out there. That's where the cell towers should be. They shouldn't be right in the center of a neighborhood. So to have it in our neighborhood, I think, is very inappropriate. It's in violation of the ordinances, the way it was zoned out here, and it was zoned out here that way for a reason, and to just disregard that and approve an exception like this, I think, is unreasonable. So I am definitely against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have one more, Jose Dugadillo.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yes, we're totally, like a couple, we're next door to Dan and we really oppose this thing. Imagine when power's down, when you got that generator running day and night, we had power last year or this year earlier with the storms and running a big diesel generator right next to our houses for, you know, for 24 hours. It's uncalled for, it's not necessary, that is not supposed to be in this area. Yeah, and the height of the trees, yeah, they do have some trees, but not that tall. This tower will stick up so much higher. And then in addition, they said, the top of the rings, it'll be for other networks to come in and use their tower, they will make money off that tower and don't care about the people who live here that have to put up with the consequences, any radiation or anything that they put up, they will lease those to those other people and companies and then they'll be throwing out some stuff at us. So the homes on the ranch, yeah, they've been there a long time too, but they do have a good view on the backside, they're going to see that tower sticking up. Today we were passing El Dorado Hills and we saw those towers sticking up like a sore thumb. Yeah, they try to make them look like a pine tree, but it's not there, they don't, you can't hide those. But then every tower, like they said, is going to be like a daisy chain from one to the other, when you got to have another one so far away to continue passing the signals down the line. So, you know, we are opposed to it, we came out here in the country for a reason, we wanted the peace and quiet, we wanted, you know, live the rest of our time out here. We don't need to, you know, have something put us under. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And we have one more, Joanna.
Hi, yes, my name is Johanna, I live on Lee School Crossroad, lived out here for over 20 years. We bought a home in Roseville to expand our business and we sold that and came back to Wilton to live in the country, not to be surrounded by towers like we are in Roseville. My home in Roseville has over 500 towers around it. EMFs penetrate through the skin so the elderly and the children are affected more. And if you want to go look at the stats in Roseville, California, you should do so. I moved away from here, I'm a seven-time cancer survivor, seven times. I had to get away from these towers and I bought a home property in Wilton and then this stuff started happening. I am with the neighbors that have spoke right before me, we don't want to see it, we don't want it near us, we moved to the country for a reason. Yeah, there's a few people that are in a hole and they don't get service and they are choosing to have internet service over their health when they have no idea what it does to them, especially the elderly and the small children. They really need to do some research and the, I'm closer to the one on Taverner, but let me address the one on Fig. I understand that the Laguna del Sol wants it, but they don't want it within their trailer park community. And if that's what they want over there, then put it where they, put it on their land, don't put it on our land. We bought for the view, we want to keep the property value and we don't want health issues. I, all of that trumps me having service and, no, my service isn't great, but I got, I went
You could please start wrapping up, ma'am. Or I'm sorry, it's a little early, you have some time, sorry.
I went and got Starlink, that made everything a whole lot better. I put a booster, which, again, let me go outside the house and still have internet. And I understand, ma'am, when you spoke about being in the dark and losing signal, you know, and not knowing where you are, especially in the country, I understand that, but, again, our health trumps that. So I am very much opposed and many of my neighbors are. I took the time out of work right now just to come to this and I attended the last meeting and I will attend every
You could please start wrapping up.
Sure, but we live in the country for a reason and if you have a problem with that, then maybe you need to go live in the city and you can have wonderful cell service with 500 towers surrounding your home and you can see the health risks. Thank you very much and we again are very, very opposed.
Thank you. That was the last commenter. Okay, I actually have a quick question for counsel, since we ended up reopening the public comment period to allow more comments, do we need to allow the applicant time to respond again to those additional comments? Okay, okay. Applicants, if you would like to respond?
No response, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, bring it back to the dais. Do any of my commissioners have any comments?
I'll chime in. I've been fairly consistent in the, as I've been on this commission with cellphone towers and that we need to continue to expand accessibility, it is important, it's not just a nice to have, it's part of our day-to-day life now and how we exist, there are many people who need it for their basic internet services because that's their choice to use as internet versus being able to potentially even be able to afford both a cellphone and internet at home. So from an accessibility standpoint, I'm in favor of this tower and being able to continue to expand services for all.
Anyone else?
I'll speak. I'm having a tough time really, you know, being 100% supportive of the project because of the amount of community input and feedback and I'm trying my best not to have labels about not in my backyard or have a scientific or health-related or background-related debate unless you're a doctor or a researcher. There is, there are some significant concerns for the community from Wilton that had been brought up to my attention as well and I just hope that we've had an opportunity to, you know, not just get into the dais today, but have a, have preset or at least previous meetings to at least hear the townsfolk who brought their concerns prior. I think, to me, I'm having a tough time balancing the necessity for us to have 5G and that connectivity, but to also, like what many of the community members have mentioned, balance the environment that they chose to kind of live in in Wilton and those are some of the concerns that have been brought up. And so I believe I supported a cell tower project in South Sacramento that supported more of a dense neighborhood. Now I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the map and the improvement map and the different shades are purple, that's where I'm having a struggle to kind of see if that would outweigh the concerns of many of the community members here present. And so I think there's some of my concerns, I think that as a developer also in my day job, I think I would have, you know, really approached the community members and tried to see if there could be an education, but as it stands right now, we have, we have a very large pocket of the Wilton population that is really, that have signed a lot of petitions and have really raised concerns and we're not here to debate whether which one's factually true or not, but the concerns themselves are, I think, a little bit concerning to me, but that's just my two cents at the moment, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move staff recommendations. I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to kind of frame procedurally where you are before, well, you made, you made the motion, not a second yet. So the rules are, I mean, here are your options, if it ends up, if it's, if you get a third vote, then it's approved, that's that. If it's a tie, that automatically goes to the board without an appeal. You also have the option to continue, you might want to ask the applicant if they support that or not, to get a full board, to have five of you, to have a deciding vote. So those are your options.
I can withdraw my motion if we'd like to discuss options. Is that allowable?
That's fine, yeah.
I'll withdraw.
Okay. I guess, does anyone have any preference on, any thoughts on any of the options that have been presented to us?
It's also, we're kind of in the dark without, you don't have to speak about how you may or may not vote, but it might add a little bit of clarity. Something else that, that, you know, there are some restrictions in the federal law, Federal Telecommunications Act, that kind of place some hurdles or I'll just say confine how you can act on these applications. One of the things is that if a wireless telecommunications facility proposal meets the federal RF standard, EMF standard, we can't, you can't deny it on that basis, on a health and safety basis, not to take anything away from people's testimony and concerns about that issue, the health and safety, but that's just, that's the law that applies here. But as far as the aesthetics, that's still fair game for us.
Okay. Any thoughts on moving, moving, what we want to do moving forward?
I'm happy to hear if the applicant would like a continuance for a full commission.
I'd be okay with that. Commissioner Baja, Commissioner Savagnano?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Applicant, are you open to a continuance, I guess?
So we, this application has been pending since, how long? Nine, nine to 10 months. We've gone through all of the county procedures, we've gone to community meetings, we've gone to design review, we presented what we believe is a very good project that is ideally suited on a large lot with a lot of visible screening and integration and we would like a vote from the commission tonight.
Okay. So counsel, if you could help advise, so since they would like a vote for a commission or a vote from the commission tonight, then
So, so we vote, the complicating factor is if it's, well, if it's a tie, you know, we, if it was a true denial, which it looks like it can't be here, it's not going to be, but if it's a tie, we wouldn't be able to adopt findings because you don't have a majority either way, but it doesn't matter because your rules just push this straight to the board in the event of a two-two tie.
Okay.
So I would say go ahead and make the motion and we'll just see how it plays out.
Okay.
Either, I think all you're either going to get a tie or you're going to get an approval here.
Okay.
So.
All right, great. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And I'll second. Clerk, if would you
I just want a confirmation, the motion is to adopt the staff recommendation?
Correct.
Yes.
And the motion carries with Member Borsha abstaining from the vote.
Okay, let's move on to our final item of the evening, item number three. Clerk, would you mind reading it into the record?
Item number three is a conditional use permit, special development permit and design review located at 10230 Davis Road at the intersection of Mann Road and Davis Road in the Kasumis community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration and I also need to take an oath for anyone who will speak on this item as well.
Okay. If anyone who's planning to speak on this item, oh, it looks like we've got one behind you, clerk? Everyone, anyone else? Okay, if you can go ahead and give them the oath.
Please raise your right hand and the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this commission is a truth so help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm? Thank you. And when you go to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement, I have been sworn.
Okay, great, let's go ahead and start with staff presentation.
Great, thank you, good evening again. I'm a patent presenting the Mann Road Wireless Communication Facility project. This project site is located at 10230 Davis Road at the intersection of Davis Road and Mann Road in the Kasumis community. The subject parcel is developed with a single-family residence and an accessory structure. Similar to the prior project, the site is within the agricultural five zoning district and is therefore subject to the agricultural residential five use and development standards. The project site is surrounded by properties used for rural residential purposes. The applicant requests a use permit to allow a wireless communication facility in the agricultural five zoning district, a special development permit to deviate from the maximum height and separation requirements and a design review to comply with the countywide design guidelines. I'll go into greater detail regarding the special development permit request on the slides to follow. I will note that an initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project, the document was released on June 16th, 2023. The document discussed biological resources, land use, aesthetics and hazardous materials in addition to other resource areas. The document concluded that the project would result in less than significant impacts with the implementation of mitigation measures. During the public review period, the county received two letters, one from a member of the public expressing opposition to the proposed tower and the other letter was from the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board noting the potential permits and regulations the applicant is responsible for as a part of the project implementation. Both comments were published with the project materials. This slide includes the site plan for the project. The applicant proposes to locate the facility within a 160-square-foot ground lease area accessed via a new proposed driveway off Mann Road. The zoning code includes minimum separation requirements from different zoning designations. Similar to the last project, the site's context is within zones classified as group one zones, requiring a minimum separation requirement of three times the height of the tower. As proposed, the facility would be located less than that distance from the west boundary, I believe it'd be 205 feet from that west boundary, requiring the special development permit. This slide includes the ground equipment plan, the fence area would enclose the tower and corresponding equipment, the fence would consist of a chain-link fence with slats. Here you can see the proposed elevations for the wireless communication facility. The tower would implement a monopine stealth design to help camouflage the facility. Towers are allowed to be up to 55 feet tall, the proposed is 85 feet tall with branches extending up to 90 feet, requiring a special development permit. The next many slides to follow include photo simulations of the proposed monopine facility provided by the applicant. Here you can see a view towards the facility looking east from Mann Road. Here you can see a representation of the proposed monopine facility from the planned access driveway. While there is not significant vegetation or foliage directly surrounding the proposed facility, in the distance you can see trees of a similar shape and structure. Here you can see a view of the proposed facility from Davis Road looking west. Here you can see a view of the proposed facility from Davis Road looking northwest. The location of the cell tower and its proposed height were requested by the applicant to meet their coverage needs. This slide features the existing coverage, the yellow dot represents the project site and this slide shows the coverage with the proposed tower. The project was considered by both the CPAC and the DRAC, the CPAC was heavily attended with approximately 50 members of the public in attendance. While some of the comments presented during the evening were provided in support of the tower, most in attendance were opposed to the proposed tower, providing concerns related to aesthetics, health effects and the lack of a need for a cell tower, along with incompatibility with the community. The design review advisory committee reviewed the project and recommends that the project be found in compliance with the countywide design guidelines. They noted that the monopine stealthing helped to camouflage the facility within its context as presented in the photo simulations. The proposed project is consistent with the general plan and the zoning code as conditioned. It can be found compatible with the surrounding zones and land uses as it implements a monopine stealth design consistent, excuse me, a monopine stealth design to help to reduce the attention to the tower. There are no significant environmental concerns and adequate mitigation measures would be applied. The proposed would comply with the requirements limiting, limiting exposure to radio frequency energy and the tower would provide cellular coverage to support the surrounding rural residential community with opportunities for future co-locations. Based on this analysis, staff is recommending approval of the request, specifically that the planning commission determine the mitigated negative declaration prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act is adequate and complete, that you adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve the use permit, approve the special development permit to deviate from the maximum height and separation requirements, and determine that the project is in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. That concludes my presentation for the cell tower this evening, and again, the applicant is available and has a presentation they would like to share with you. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff this evening?
Just have a quick question. Thank you so much for the presentation. Not to question our EIR, but even on the previous one, you mentioned that there were only two letters, yet we've received like a large number of petitions against this. I'm having a tough time kind of, do these petitions that are now being entered into record, is that now not, not going to be part of our EIR process as part of the feedback? I know it's only been about 30 or so plus days, but are, are we not weighing or at least counting the petitions? I mean, folks are signing on to these. I get the disconnect between the county on their EIR process receiving two letters of proposed, and then now we come in here with like 150 signatures. I'm just having a really tough time.
Yeah, I can offer some clarification on that. So, the environmental document was released on June 16th, 2023 for public review, and the two letters that I'm referencing were submitted directly in relation to the environmental impact report. So they were comments specific to the EIR. The other comments were all filed into, received by the clerk of the board, and then also included in the hearing package today, and are considered separate comments, not specific necessarily to the EIR, not directly provided in context of the EIR. So those comments that were provided in the EAR, we are required to respond to those comments, and those, those responses to those comments were published within the hearing materials.
Understood. So if like OPR, SGC were to say, how did you do your mitigated NDDAC, they're only going to see the two letters and not necessarily all of the other comments that were provided to this body?
Both sets of comments are published online with the materials. One set of comments is published with the initial study mitigated negative declaration, and then the other set of comments includes all general comments, and in addition to that, it includes the comments that were provided for the EIR.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And Commissioner Jessica Brand, I do want to clarify that the petitions were for Taverner Road, which was item number two. There was not a petition that was submitted for item number three.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff this evening? No? Okay, I guess we'll move on to applicant presentation.
Good evening again, Chair, and members of the commission. Kevin Sullivan, I have been sworn.
Are you using the same presentation that you... Okay.
That, or I have a flash drive, whichever is easiest for you.
I'd say probably the overhead just for now, and then it'll be entered into the record once we're done.
Do you have copy? Oh, okay. Thank you. And if you could please email the presentation to me so I can have that material as well. Thank you. Whenever you have.
Almost staff hasn't, we'll, we'll forward it to you.
Your staff has it?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the second page of the handout, and what we have right here, just identifies some key elements of this project, very similar to the one before, but we still need to go through these. The Davis Road, Mann Road site is needed to fill a significant gap in T-Mobile's area network coverage. We talked about wireless consumers utilizing multiple wireless devices most of the time for a variety of different everyday uses, and also demanding a lot of capacity from the wireless networks. This facility is able to provide an enhanced coverage footprint and some additional capacity for the network. The lease area is less than one-half of 1% of the nearly nine-acre large combined property. There'll be minor grading for the new gravel road, mostly on flat ground, and very limited grading for foundation work. The design of this facility also has a very thick or dense branch count to help shield both the pole and the antennas. And again, as part of Exhibit A to the July 19th letter submitted to the county, we've got a structural engineer's letter that identifies this facility has been designed consistent with the California Building Code, and also to have a 40-foot fall zone. The leased area will have an eight-foot-high fence with privacy slats. All equipment will be six feet or under, and so fully concealed or shielded by the fencing. Here, five other possible locations were looked at for this site, but were rejected because they were either outside the coverage ring, or the property owners were not interested in doing a lease. Again, this project, just like the other one, must comply with the FCC RF health-safety standards, and a detailed RF study was presented or provided as part of this application, which, after thorough study, identified that less than 10% of the FCC health-safety standard limit would be generated at the second story of the residence on the property, and of course, that RF energy dissipates over distance, and so any off-site properties would be even less than that. The County Design Review Advisory Committee determined that the project substantially complies with the county's design guidelines. If we go to the next one. As noted in staff presentation, this project will not have any significant environmental impacts. That was determined after a very detailed initial study and mitigated negative declaration, and with the standard typical mitigation that's being applied, no significant impacts from the project. This property and the project is not in or near any designated scenic highways, corridors, or roadways. The facility lease area is about 320 feet away from Davis Road, I think to the east, and about 275 feet away from Mann Road to the north. There are oak and pine and other trees as high as 42 feet that are on the leased property, and then we're going to see in an upcoming slide that there are some about 70-foot-high eucalyptus trees directly across Mann Road from the current residents on the property, all of which help to provide some visual integration and screening for the facility. The facility will comply with all county codes, including with respect to noise and fire, and as we're going to see in some upcoming slides, there are segments of both Davis and Mann Road near the property that have tall trees. They've also got tall utility poles with crossarms transformers and high utility lines, all of which provide visual integration for the proposed facility. So on this slide, we are on Mann Road looking west from about where the entrance would be to the new gravel road, and you can see kind of just left of center, a real tall utility pole with crossarms and transformers, another one on the right, a little bit further in the distance, and then just right of center, you see that tall line of eucalyptus trees that are estimated to be about 70 feet high. Next, please. Here's a slide that is on Davis Road, just southwest of the facility. It's looking north, and you again see trees along the roadway, and also a tall utility pole and crossarms and wires. Next, please. And then this is a street view on Davis Road, due east of the facility, proposed facility, and looking east, and you see again some real tall utility poles with crossarms, transformers, and utility wires. All of this helps to provide some visual integration for the proposed facility. Next. The facility, as noted, is needed to fill a significant gap in T-Mobile's area network wireless services and capacity. We've talked about the fact that so much of our everyday life and business and emergency services depends on good, reliable, strong wireless coverage, and that's what this facility is going to provide in the Wilton community. T-Mobile's five nearest area network facilities received about 250 E911 calls in a recent 30-day period, and this facility is just going to enhance that E911 capability. As we're going to see in an upcoming slide, the facility footprint will cover many hundreds, if not thousands, of unserved and underserved homes with reliable in-building coverage, and then surrounding road networks with reliable in-vehicle coverage. And part of those road networks are Dillard Road that include intersections with Consumnes, Wilton Roads, and then Walmart Road intersecting with Dillard, Davis, Colony Roads, and Badger Creek Lane. Next. So here is a slide showing the existing situation out there, and you can see kind of just, yeah, right above there, kind of right of center is where the proposed facility is, and currently we've got very weak coverage, even weak outdoor coverage, and we don't have strong in-building and in-vehicle coverage in this area. Next slide, please. And now you can see with the, if you could show them, Bill, where the facility is. Yeah, the, right there. So now we've got a significantly expanded new footprint of dark red, which is the reliable in-building coverage, which is the, the standard that T-Mobile and other carriers seek in their networks. Next slide. Here is an aerial with the approximate boundary of new and improved reliable in-building coverage in the area. And then last slide, please. Based on that vertical bridge request, that consistent with the staff's recommendation, this Planning Commission certified the mitigated negative declaration and approved the related mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and then also approved the conditional use permit, special development permit, and design review. And we are available to answer questions that you may have.
Any questions for the applicant this evening?
I, I have some questions. I was hoping you could go back to the slides that have the pictures of Mann Road, Davis Road, and Davis Road due east of the facility site, and kind of show where in, I guess, where would the proposed tower be in each of these locations? Because the pictures are a little bit different than the simulations that were in the staff report, and so, just like a visual.
Where's the first one? Let's just start with that first one. That's second. So on, on this one, this is a photo on Mann Road looking to the west. That you see off on the left-hand side is the current residence on the almost nine-acre property, and where the photo is taken from is approximately where the new gravel driveway will be off on the left-hand side, going south down to the leased area.
Okay, and I guess, where would the tower be?
The tower would be to, to the left, approximately 300 or so feet away.
Okay, so, so on the left-hand side...
Right.
Opposite of the eucalyptus trees? Or I think, I think you said those were eucalyptus trees, right?
Correct.
Okay, and would it be, I'm just trying to visualize in my mind, would it be at about, I guess, the same, like, from where we are?
Commissioner Wong, I think they're trying to say that this is where the gravel lot would come right off the road where we're standing, and then to here is where the tower would be.
Got it, okay.
So we're standing at the road where the tower would be.
Got it, so there's no way for me to...
About 300 feet to the south. Yeah, since there were already photo simulations that were done, I was just trying to show you what the road looks like. I mean, kind of the, on the road network, if you're driving around, what are you going to see in addition to the tower?
Okay, okay, and I, I guess I was trying to see if I could get a visual of what the tower would look like in comparison to the eucalyptus trees and everything else that's around it.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm not that good. I wasn't able to generate that slide.
Okay, what about on, let's see here, and then the Dave, okay, so it's over there.
Yeah, I'm going to go on that one.
And then the Davis one?
So this is Davis Road. This would be a little bit south and east, I believe, of the facility. So I think you see a white building over there. It's approximately in that location where the proposed facility would be, but this is just another view if you're heading north on, on Davis Road. You know, what, what are you seeing kind of in your drive?
Got it, got it. Okay, so it'd be opposite of, and I don't know the different types of trees, but opposite of the...
There are some tall pine trees or...
Trees, yeah, okay.
Conifers over on the right-hand side, correct.
Okay.
And then on the last one, this would, this is on Davis Road, about due east from where the facility would be, 300 or, you know, plus feet away. And it's just, it's looking away from the facility, but back toward kind of this visual clutter that is part of the area.
Got it, and it would be sort of on the left-hand...
It would be directly behind where this photo is taken.
Or behind, okay. Okay. Thank you, that's very helpful.
All right.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant this evening? No? Okay, let's go ahead and go to public comment then. First, let's go to the phone lines. Clerk, is there anyone on the...
Chair, Wong, could I ask that you take the in-person public comment so that I can let anyone who may be online use their Star 9 feature to raise their hands so that they can make public comment for this item?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll go with in-person public comment first. First, we'll have Beverly Posen, sorry. And you have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Beverly Posane. I live in Wilton. I've been there for 53 years. I have recently purchased my father's home. He passed away four years ago. The land was very important to him. It's very important to me and my family. As I look at this map, you can see that where the towers are, they put little radiation, so they kind of know that it's radiation, it's no hiding it. With the, with the other tower, there were some areas that weren't as dark, but where this tower goes, it's already saturated. I know from my own cell phone service, it's Verizon out there, and there's plenty of it. So I don't know if this is a different T-Mobile that wants to come out here and say there's not enough service. It's not the truth. There's plenty of service, it's just Verizon has kind of the, the cap on it, and that's why we all have Verizon's phones. And why do we have Verizon phones? Because we're forced to go cellular phones. Our, our landline phones are $60 a month and climbing just to have a landline phone, and we need a landline phone out there in Wilton with these storms, because you know what happened last winter with the floods. I got this in the mail three and a half days ago. It says nothing about what the frequencies are, not a thing. I just found out today when I got here, it was 5G. I didn't know there was any petitions. We are in the dark. People don't even know in Wilton that this is coming to them. They're going to be shocked. I usually kind of keep up with the news and what's going on, but I work an eight-to-five job, and I have a family, and I have many trees, many, many trees to take care of around my property, which actually helps with the negative ions that they give out to make you feel better against things like this. Now, he says that there are plenty of trees and covering, yeah, that's true, Taverner Road. I drove out to Taverner Road yesterday to see what the tree situation was, but this is flat land, it's out in the middle of bare nothing. He took his, his pictures very carefully, and the guy that came up here and said, "Oh, I'm looking forward to having that, I need that." If there was a red line for every single RF frequency, you guys would be freaked out at how much is going on around now, and going, and touching, and going through our bodies. We have...
If you could begin to wrap up, please.
Okay, so I'm not going to go into the health, everyone else did, but I plead with you, plead with you not to, to let this tower happen. It's not needed. It's beautiful out there, and it's our home, it's our land, it's our children. We know from the Sutro Tower in San Francisco, then within a half a mile, and that's from 1972 to 88, that, that within a half a mile, there were 35 people with brain tumors, 55 people, children with leukemia, and all the... children with leukemia, and all the others, up to 300 people total with other kinds of cancers in clusters. There are hotspots. Who knows who's going to be in the hotspot? How can you take this so petty and just give me two darn minutes to talk about something that's so important?
Could you please wrap up?
And you don't realize, if you think that RF doesn't hurt you, it's ignorance. It really is. We are electrical beings. We have positive and negative signals in our body that moves iron around to protect us from cancer, that keeps our cells round, and all of these things degrade those...
Ms., can you please wrap up?
And this is Wilton, and this is our natural home, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have commenters in Zoom, and if there's anyone else in Zoom who would like to make a public comment, I currently only have one, so if there's anyone else who'd like to raise their hand, please do so, and you can make public comments. So the first person is...
Oh, actually, Clerk, I think we have one more.
Is there one more? I'm sorry.
So we do have more comments in person.
Yes. Richard Posey?
Sorry, Chairperson.
It's okay.
Thank you. I just want to say, on my phone, I get three bars, and I'm a third of a mile from this proposed site. This is absolute saturation, there's no reason to put a tower there. They showed on the map, it was all overlapping, all the red was overlapping. This is way overkill and way over saturation. I have young children. Who's going to be there when they have brain tumors? It's going to be on you guys. Why should we have to suffer? It's not right, it's beautiful out there. It's going to be an eyesore. There aren't any trees around that property. It's all a big fake lie that they're telling. My phone works fine. We don't need this. I don't know how you guys can sit there and just go, "Oh, it's good, coverage is good." Don't you think about anybody's health? Doesn't matter to you. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, Clerk, I understand that we have a couple of people who have called in?
Yes.
Brett Scher?
Good evening, members of the planning commission. I have been sworn in. I've been a resident of Wilton for over 26 years, and I just want you to take in mind some density-specific information to really address, you've already approved one cellphone tower for the Wilton community tonight, and why do we need to continue with another one? Wilton's about 54 square miles in size with a resident population of about 6,000 people. So if you do the math, we're starting to put one tower for every 5, for every 1,000 people in the area of Wilton, which seems like that's in excess and overburdensome. Currently, for this location, there is a cellphone tower on Wilton Road over by the grape vineyards. Now, there's an approved cellphone tower on Taverner. There's also another approved cellphone tower on Dillard east of Taverner, and there's towers to the south of us down in the Galt and Harold areas. This particular site, if you look at, if you take the time to look at an aerial map of the property that's being proposed, there are zero trees anywhere around except the perimeter, the actual county-owned ditches of the property that's in question. Those are right-ofways of the county, and yes, there are some oak trees that are 40, maybe 50 feet tall at the most, and yes, there are some eucalyptus trees that are across the street, but again, not on the property in question. This is going to be a pine tree, of which there are probably less than a couple hundred pine trees in the entire 54 square miles of Wilton, because they just don't survive in the Sacramento Valley area. And it's not appropriate to put a tree that doesn't belong in the geographical and agricultural area. This parcel is wide-open grass and is a visual eyesore from my personal residence. I'm very concerned about the health effects, even though I'm not a scientist. I'm very concerned about loss of property value, of which we all should be with the amount of inflation that we're all suffering. And again, I believe that after being in Wilton for 26 years, I moved to the country to be in the country, and I accepted the fact that we have a volunteer fire department, and that we have a Sacramento County Sheriff's Department with extended response, and that we have cellphone service and internet services that potentially are mediocre and are marginal.
Could you please start to wrap up, sir?
Okay, compared to a higher-density city location like downtown Sacramento, downtown, you know, Fair Oaks, et cetera. But we chose that. We moved to Wilton to have country atmosphere in Sacramento County. And I encourage you to please, after you've already done one cellphone tower approval tonight, let that one be installed, deny this one, and they can come back with further density studies to suggest that we need more cellphone coverage for 5,000 to 7,000 people. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have another caller, Clerk?
Yes.
I'm Lauren Plummer. I have been sworn. I'm in opposition to this cell tower. Approximately 50 people attended the Casuna CPAC meeting, and with rare exception, were united in opposition to the tower. We're a residential neighborhood. Despite varied amounts of acreage, the houses are clustered together in a very neighborly fashion. We're not industrial or commercial and should not be subjected to the intrusion of an 85-foot tower. And this tower would be next door to some people, across the street from some people, just a couple of doors down, like me, I live on Davis Road. The proposed location is definitely not remote. It is in our backyards. I urge you to drive past it if you haven't, and you can see the property, which is bare, and how houses are just clustered around it. So the Wilton residents don't want it. It's not appropriate for our community. So I urge you to deny it, and I also please request that you represent the people of this community. Represent us, not T-Mobile. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, do we have anyone else calling?
We do. We have Britt.
Hi, yes, my name is Britt, and I was wondering, how do we make an appeal if you guys do decide to approve this? Because people move to this community to be away from all this stuff, to be away from all of the internet things that are in here, the 5G, all of these towers. So if you guys do decide to approve it, how does one make an appeal? Because it's something that a lot of the community does not want. Over 98, like, basically 98% of the room at the last meeting decided that they did not want it, and only two people were in favor of it. So I'm trying to understand how we can make an appeal if you do decide to approve this.
Counsel, do you want to respond?
Sure, you, well, if there's an approval, you have 10 days.
10 days, yeah.
Yes, you have 10 days.
10 days to appeal. You need to obtain a notice of appeal form from the clerk, and submit within 10 days.
And there is an appeal fee. I don't know what that fee is right now. Off the top of my head, I would have to look at the schedule.
Right, so do you have a number that you can just read, a phone number to contact the clerk's office?
Yes, you can reach the clerk's office at 916-874-5451.
Is there a hyperlink that you can put in the chat window that we could click on so that we can start the appeal process just in case? Because there's, and does everyone have to pay the appeal fee? Because there's over, there's a lot of people in the neighborhood that do not want this. So if there is an appeal link, if you could put it in the chat window, that would be awesome so we can click on it and print that out just in case. And then, does everyone, each and every one of us have to pay that appeal fee? Or can one of us pay that fee and then basically write all the appeal letters and email them or mail them in at once?
I cannot send a link because there is no way to link. I can, an email, if you can send an email to boardclerk@satcounty.gov, I can respond to that email and provide you with all the information.
That would be amazing. I really appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Does that conclude your public comment?
Yes, it does. Thank you for asking. Sorry, guys.
Okay, we do have another commenters. Joanna, please unmute your microphone, and you can start your public comment.
Oh, hi, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Actually, I am complete agreement with Britt. That was what I was getting on here to say. We were having trouble getting her on, but I wrote down the information about the appeal process, and again, I didn't hear the answer to her last question, and that was, can a person appeal and we all sign or, you know, in agreement and do it all at once? Or is this going to be an individual appeal, you know, per homeowner?
It could be a consolidated appeal.
Okay, okay, that's perfect. And again, I was trying to write that down as fast as I could when you said it, your email, do you happen to have it?
It's boardclerk@satcounty.gov.
Sir.
It's also on the agenda where you would email the public comments, if you sent public comments via written public comments. So it's boardclerk@satcounty.gov.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you for taking the time. And again, I was at the last meeting that she spoke about, and the room was full, and everybody was opposed, and actually very upset. It was not the normal meet-and-greet of our small town. It was, we were upset, and only two people stood up. Actually, one was halfway in agreement with certain things. So there was actually one that was in agreement with you, and the rest of us were opposed. So I'm just really curious how we're coming to this decision, almost like the homeowners, you know, we've moved out here for a reason, and we're not being heard. So thank you for listening today, and we will contact you for the appeal. Thank you again.
And I do not see anyone else in Zoom with their hand raised, so I think we can close this. If there's anyone else, please raise your hand now so that we can hear your public testimony. If not, I'll ask the chairperson to close. We have one more.
Hi, yes, I apologize. I'm coming late to the meeting. I wasn't sure if you were, now is the time to have comments on subjects that weren't on the agenda?
No, not yet. That would be item, the last item on the agenda, so...
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment for item number three.
Okay, let's go ahead and close public comment.
I'm so sorry. There's one more.
Never mind.
I'm sorry.
Take it back.
Oh, wait. Mr. Del Godillo, I see that you raised your hand, but for some reason, it keeps getting lowered, so I don't know if you don't want to make a public comment or not. Here we go. Mr. Del Godillo?
We spoke earlier on the other one. The issue is that we have these people that give you a visual of what it's supposed to look like, and nowhere is it to scale, how these towers are going to look compared to what we have out here. And we have heard the same thing over on all the formats, that they're saying the exact same verbiage, and it doesn't make sense. If you actually go out there to the sites, what they're talking about, you'll see what it really is. It's not the scale. It's their interpretation. They're trying to sell you some bill of goods, and that's all that seemed to be happening. It's a bill of goods being sold to you guys that don't live out here, you don't know what it actually looks like. You're just hearing their representation and what they're saying. It's not true what they're saying. And we, the people that live out here, are going to be the ones that are going to get sick. You know, if we get sick, get cancer, which, you know, at our age, people start getting it. But, you know, we don't need it to be sped up to get us to die just so these guys could have a phone. They have all these other phone services out here, Sprint, Verizon. They don't need, T-Mobile just wants a piece of the pie. They don't, I don't want to give them my piece of the pie for my life just to have them have it. So please, when you consider again if we get an appeal, please think about, you guys are going to change people's lives with the way you vote. Not only ours, our grandkids and their grandkids, and so on. It's going to change everybody's life just to have a phone. We have a phone, and one of the guys that was up there said he only had service for a little bit, but the thing is, I upgraded my phone last year, and I live on that same street, and my phone works perfect. I don't have an issue. So if he upgrades his, he will have no issue. But please reconsider, people's lives could be at stake here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment for item number three.
Okay, I'm going to speak slowly in case someone else raises their hand. No. Okay, let's go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the dais for discussion. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. Would the applicant like to come up and respond to any of the public comments that were made this evening?
Yes, yes, some brief comments. Kevin Sullivan, again, on behalf of Vertical Bridge. So regarding the health issues, this project, as demonstrated through an RF study, fully complies with the FCC health safety standards, and those standards have been reviewed, developed, and affirmed by the FCC in conjunction with the FDA, the EPA, OSHA, and other federal agencies charged with protecting health. With respect to coverage being out in the area, what I heard was Verizon customers have some coverage out in the area, but under the Telecommunications Act, each carrier is able to, you know, deal with a significant gap in their own individual coverage networks. And T-Mobile has demonstrated that here. You do that under the Telecommunications Act by showing that you've done an appropriate alternative site analysis, which we have, and that there's a significant gap in your in-building coverage, you know, based on a footprint of homes that would be covered and by road segments, and T-Mobile has identified that here. So the fact that there may be coverage for other carriers misses the point. T-Mobile has a significant gap in their coverage that they need to fill with this facility. And we can answer any other questions you have.
Okay, so just to clarify, the graphics that were provided to us, that refers to the coverage that T-Mobile has, not general coverage?
Correct.
Okay.
And in this area, T-Mobile has very weak kind of outdoor coverage, but not significant, strong, reliable in-building coverage, which is the network standard and objective, not just for T-Mobile, but for other carriers.
Okay. And actually, I have a technical question for you. I'm hoping you can help, I guess, walk or help walk me through what the different color coding means. I mean, if you could just explain it in layman's terms. I mean, obviously, the light pink is, you know, very light coverage, and then it looks like a magenta is the next level, and then, I don't know, I guess that's hot pink is the next level, and then maybe, let's call that merlot.
Dark, dark red.
Dark red. So in layman's terms, what's the difference between those different colors?
So the, there really is kind of a scale going from top to bottom with, you know, weakest to strongest coverage. Up at the top, you're going to have weak coverage, which represents maybe outdoor coverage. Then the next level is going to be maybe not reliable in-vehicle coverage. You know, as vehicles travel, you have to have a strong signal to be able to deal with a moving target, to be able to deal with, you know, steel frame of your vehicle. The next one identifies a strong in-vehicle coverage, and then the bottom one identifies a strong in-building coverage, which is the coverage objective out here.
Okay, and so it looks like we're going from, we'll call it level three to level four with this... Okay, and so it looks like we're going from, we'll call it level three to level four with this project. It kind of looks like.
Yeah, it's actually more level two to level four.
Okay, because I was looking, I guess, directly at where the arrow.
Yeah.
Was pointing to, which is.
Well, and I think we're looking at a broader footprint, a kind of an area coverage. But it's kind of the area in between the existing T-Mobile facility out to the west and the other one to the northeast.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicants? No? Okay. Oh, yes, go ahead.
I have a question. So I was looking at kind of the distance between the two towers. It looks like they're about six miles or so away from each other. I'm just kind of wondering what the urgency is. I get it, right, expanding coverage, but just, I don't know if there's anything else you can share of like what the urgency is of doing the two towers today? Or if you looked at potentially putting the tower elsewhere to cover both areas versus having two towers? I don't know, maybe you can talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. Each tower is looking to fill a significant gap in that part of T-Mobile's area network. A distance of six miles between two towers, I mean, it might as well be to the moon. These facilities have a relatively limited footprint. And the reason is, is if we can maybe put up this one. What, what the RF engineers are trying to do is put a puzzle together. They're trying to identify a location for a facility that they're going to be able to have a, an RF coverage footprint that is going to be far enough to fill a gap, to kind of touch the edges of where the other facilities reach. If you get facilities too close to each other, then the RF signals start to interfere. And it's just as bad as having no coverage. But you also have to be close enough to where you're just trying to kind of touch or kiss the edges of all of these real dark coverage footprints. And that's what provides the coverage. And so here, the hole in the coverage, the significant gap in coverage is very distant from the gap in coverage that is being dealt with by the Taverner Road facility, the earlier facility you covered. And so it'd be great if carriers could go out and plop a facility somewhere and it just covers 200 square miles. But it's just, the RF engineers have explained to me in the 25 years that I've worked in this field that that's just not possible. It used to be what could happen when, you know, wireless coverage was in its infancy. But now you're having to, you know, modulate and model all of these coverage footprints to fit into networks so that they fill enough, but not too much to where they interfere.
Hi, my name is Bill Lewis. I will also represent the applicant and I have been sworn. Just to kind of comment on the other tower that was recently approved by this council earlier tonight. It's located generally in this area. Our proposal is to propose a tower here. And one of the commissioners asked if, you know, looking at potentially placing one tower that could accommodate coverage for both areas. There actually is a site in between both towers. And there's still a need for a tower in both of those locations. So I don't know if that gives a little bit more context to your question.
It does, yeah, thank you. I guess I'm just looking at the simulations and do you see a difference with this tower versus the other one? I think the other one appeared to be a little bit more, just better placed, surrounded with other trees. This one does appear to be more like on flat, open land with not a whole lot of trees. So that's kind of why I was asking the question as I'm kind of listening and thinking about this one. So thank you.
Any other, any other questions? No? Okay, go ahead and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
Can I ask council to reiterate what we're allowed to consider in regards to the proposal again? You had stipulated that federal law prohibited us from considering, I'll say, if it complies with, if I remember correctly.
It complies with the FCC standard, the federal standard, then you can't consider other evidence about health effects. You would be able to deny it on the basis of testimony you've heard about health effects as long as it meets the federal standard. That's the applicable, that's what you have to consider. You can ask them about what goes into the federal standard, you know, how the FCC arrives at that. But that's what applies.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. You know, struggling to, to really make, make a strong decision, but I'm just having so much more concerns. You know, as part of being a planning commissioner, we have to take a look at how our planning processes connect people to community, not just about protecting property values. And I'm a resident of District Five. I volunteer in Dillard Elementary School. I support all of the equestrian activities in Wilton. And I really do encourage our community to take a look at just a different lifestyle that Wilton has. And I'm not saying that's better or the other, but that is a decision that those community members have, have made. And I think that outside of the questions of concerns, as part of a planning commission, I think we, we do have to elevate or at the very least consider the concerns that have been brought by the community. Wilton is a very small but tight-knit place. And to see their CPAC be, again, very packed, I mean, it's not just about, again, labeling NIMBYism. And again, we, we're here trying to balance quality of life, economic development, as well as public health good as it goes to our county standards. But what I'd like to also bring up to mind is that as we're writing the county standards, the way of life at where Wilton has been, it's a little bit different. That's why I voted yes on prior cell towers that are in a larger, a little bit more density areas where 911 considerations may have been there. But again, Wilton is a little bit different. And there's a sense of place that I believe that many of the community members have been trying to bring up, along with, again, varying concerns and/or viewpoints. I'm not a doctor, so I will not be weighing in on the medical efficacy of whatever available, you know, background or information's out there. But also just, again, this is not the first nor the last cell tower that this planning body is going to be considering this year. I think that there is some sense of, again, community place and judgment that we have to consider. And, and again, I do strongly urge the members of this dais, but also the community members to, you know, keep following these types of decision-making bodies because it does impact their day-to-day lives. And that is where my concerns are here. That's why I just cannot have a firm yes on this. And I think that, given the opportunity, and I do hear the applicants, that it's been a nine or 10-month road. But I think we, we have to do it right, if we have to do it right, but it community. So that is my concerns and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I just, oh, Commissioner, oh. I just have a couple of comments that I'd like to make as well. I'd like to echo some of the concerns that Commissioner Sabagnano had stated earlier in that, you know, I think we're, I feel like we're dealing with a slightly different situation than the prior project. The tower for this one, I feel like it does stand out a lot more than the, the, the project that we just heard. And which is why I was asking a lot of those questions on trying to figure out, you know, what the placement was in relation to the photos that were being shown. You know, also, when comparing the coverage that was available, I think we're in a slightly different situation as well. In the prior project, we were dealing with an area that was predominant, or, you know, that was, you know, a light pink area. And, you know, here, you know, we've got, you know, a level one area. And with this project, you know, we're already at, it looks like a two slash three. So it's not quite as, I guess, the cellphone, the cellphone, or the coverage wouldn't be quite as spotty as what we were dealing with in the, in, with item or agenda item number two. So, you know, I'm really struggling, you know, for those reasons, I'm, you know, struggling with this project or this particular item as well. Anyone, anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Do we have a motion?
I mean, I'm happy to make a motion, but I don't know that my motion would prevail. So I'm happy to hear a different motion if that's something that the commission would want to put forward.
Counsel, I assume that the same, the four options that you had laid out, I think it was four options that you had laid out for us with the prior item, those are the same options we have here, right?
Right, it sounds like the applicant is not in favor of having a continuance to get a five-person board. That was on the other project. Oh, okay. Let's hear them out then, if they would want to consider having a, a full board.
So it sounds like there's two concerns that the planning commission has. One is the potential aesthetics being in a flat area. And the other is the need for, for the site. And it sounds like it might be having more information and potentially another design. We are happy to present another faux tower designed, faux tree, maybe a eucalyptus tree, so that the board can also consider that as well, as well as provide additional feedback from the RF engineers from T-Mobile to really paint a picture as to why a site is needed versus just, you know, a 2D colored image. If the planning commission would be interested in that, we would be willing to entertain a continuance to provide additional information.
Okay. And counsel, so would the motion, potential motion be to continue the item?
Right, if you, if there's a motion to continue, and I still, I kind of know how you're going to vote, I don't know how you're going to vote. It might not even matter, having the fifth commissioner here. But I will say this, procedurally, we have what we call a shot clock deadline on these applications. And your commission has to act on the application within a certain number of days. I don't know where we are on the number of days or how much time we have left. But what we want to see is an agreement from the applicant to extend, to toll the shot clock to be able to accommodate a continuance.
We would agree to that.
Okay, so if we, if we can get that agreement, then yes. The thing is, we continue to a date that we hope there's five members present, but, you know, we can't always guarantee it. The plan, the plan department can do its best to try and figure out when you're all going to be here. Sometimes we just can't control it. So that could, I don't know, it could be in two weeks, it won't be in two weeks, right? Three more weeks is the next meeting.
So the, yeah, so Jessica Brandt, the, the next meeting is in three weeks. We do expect a full? No, we do not.
I'm not certain that I will be back in time.
That's right. So we will have likely four members out of five. I don't know if that's the basis of the continuance, though. It sounded like perhaps the council wanted more information.
Right, I did hear a couple, there's a few things going on. There's having a full commission and there's also additional evidence that the applicant just said they might be, or they would be able to provide.
I do want to mention that I, trying to do a date certain might be a bit problematic because if they do come up with additional designs, I think we probably would need to look at the environmental document again, the aesthetics chapter and update that. And so unless we do, maybe two, three months out, I would rather, do we just continue to a date uncertain? Or would we just drop it?
You can.
Right.
Oh, go ahead.
Sure, you can just, you can continue it. If you don't continue it to a, to a date certain, we send out the notices again. So everybody gets notice.
Which I think I would prefer, honestly, with the interest in this project.
Okay. I guess then I'd like to move to, or move to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Second.
Can I ask a question? I know the applicant said that they were willing to give more time. A date uncertain is a very different, I'll say, timeframe than what? I'd be curious to hear the applicant reconfirm that a date uncertain is.
Right, if we're talking about, this could be three months from now or something, you might not be as inclined.
If there's an understanding that the continuance, while to a date uncertain, will be, you know, as soon as reasonably practicable, then we would be agreeable to that. I mean, we understand that if we come up with a new design, you know, staff is going to have to take a look at it. Staff's going to have to take a look at additional RF information. It's going to take a little bit of time to gather that. So we understand we're not going to be coming back in two weeks. But, you know, if, if we could just get the commitment from staff that they'll move this forward, you know, as quickly as reasonably practicable, that would be acceptable.
I'm seeing nodding.
Yeah, yes. Staff can commit to making this priority. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Clerk, would you please call the roll or, yeah, the roll or not, yeah?
And the motion carries with those members present, to continue the item to a date uncertain.
Okay, oops. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to, oh, wait a minute, item number four, which is.
Planning Director's Report.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good evening. So Jessica Brandt, Principal Planner. The report back I wanted to provide tonight is an update on our review of the activities happening at 7104 San Juanita Avenue. I do want to let the commission know that staff from the County Engineering Division and from Building and Permitting did go out to the site. There was a grading violation that was issued for activities out there. And there was a stop work order placed on some of the building improvement work that's being done. At this time, we are not issuing a code enforcement violation because they are not actively operational. So I, we are retaining that as, as a potential option. Should they operate in a manner that is inconsistent with the use permit, we would start code enforcement proceedings at that point. I do want to emphasize that that's a beginning of a potential revocation. You have to give an applicant a number of opportunities to come into compliance with an existing use permit. So there will be more to come, I'm sure, but I just wanted to provide that update. Thank you.
May I just have a quick question in there? By any chance, have we taken a look to see whether there was a state law or other precedents? I know that was a, for former discussion, but was, was there a new, a change, a new state law that would otherwise put all of our efforts of putting them into compliance to moot? Because they can just say and reflect back that because of this change, then we don't even need to step in? Or was that not determined?
So there, there's been some preliminary review. And I think it, we still don't have a full picture of the operations that they plan to have on the site. And so some of that will be dependent on the scope that they are going to have. If they retain it more in a residential services capacity with limited medical intervention, then that could probably be considered consistent or allowed as a, as a supportive use in a single-family residential zone. If they go more intensive medical interventions, then that would be considered either congregate care or even kind of a hospital-like situation. And then that would not be covered. But again, because they haven't started their operations, it's still unclear.
Thank you for looking into that for us. See, moving on to item number five, are there any miscellaneous scheduling items?
I just wanted to make the announcement that the commission's next meeting will be on August 14th.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have, that was for item five, miscellaneous scheduling matters. And for item six, we do have two persons in Zoom. And for item six, we do have two persons in Zoom who would like to make off agenda public comments.
Okay. Cara Newman, if you'd like to start your public comment, you have two minutes.
Hi, I'd like to comment. Thank you for the 7104 Santa Juanita Avenue bring up. That's the transition into what I'm going to talk about. So I'd like to comment on the Planning and Environmental Review Document from January 13th, 2023, for the former St. Patrick's Golden Care Ranch at that address. A determination was made that Diamond House Mental Health, which should be, is, tends to be a 24-hour inpatient residential treatment and care for persons with mental health and/or dual diagnosis disorders, could be seen as congregate care and to allow it to operate on a use permit from 1997. That was for non-ambulatory residential care. The document says that the entitlements run with the land and allow for the continued use of a non-ambulatory residential care facility consistent with the prior operation. From the document, expansion of use or more intense medical treatments as described in this letter would trigger need for an amendment to the use permit and/or change in the classification of the facility. The neighborhood believes that a non-ambulatory residential elder care is not equivalent to a detox treatment center for ambulatory dual diagnosis inpatient treatment. It is our understanding that according to the 1997 conditional use permit and subsequent documents, that a conditional use permit, if not used for the purpose that it was granted, shall lapse and become void three years following the date on which the permit became effective. The entitlements have not been used for more than seven years, and the facility has remained empty and unused. The new use by Diamond House is not the same as the old use of St. Patrick's Golden Care Home. I'd like the planning commission to start a new permitting process, which includes community review for this address. Thank you.
Okay, and we have one other public commenter. Millie D.
Hi, thank you again for taking our comments. I'm going to piggyback on what Cara had to say in that it, it does indeed seem that the, the function of Diamond House is different from the elder care and focusing on the medical management portion of it. If they are doing a more serious treatment of, say, alcohol withdrawal, they could be administering items that are controlled substances, schedule four, like benzodiazepines to help treat those withdrawal symptoms like seizure. So there could be some really serious drugs on location at the site. So again, I, I encourage the, the board, the committee to find out as much as they can, as soon as they can, about the, the use of this facility. Because on the surface, what we're seeing, it is not the same as what the 99, or 1997 and the 2000, you know, the other subsequent permits are saying. It, it does not seem like the same use. Thank you.
And that concludes off agenda public comment. Okay, great. Well, we have concluded our agenda for this evening. And so tonight's planning commission hearing is adjourned.